Special meeting of the common council, city of Oneonta, New York. June fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, just about six thirty-two. Over. Roll.
Councilmember Murphy.
Here.
Councilmember Davies.
Here.
Councilmember Riesberger.
Here.
Councilmember McCarron.
Here.
Councilmember Herrington.
Here.
Councilmember Falco.
Yeah.
Mayor Drannick.
Yeah. And if you join me, stand for the. And to the Republic from the stands. One nation under God. In this small thirteen. But before we begin. Yesterday is with a touch of sadness that I accepted the resignation of seventh floor council member John Rafter. Will be moving from the area. We will miss John. And this spirited debate study famously brought to council. But mostly will miss the warmth of his smile and the well-considered articulation of his opinions. Throughout his seven and a half years on council, John always kept what was best for the community as his north star. And even as his view of that star moves south with him and his family, we know that his new neighbors will benefit from John's commitment to civic improvement and on behalf of the entire city, we wish John the best now and always. Now. Welcome to the council chambers. Very good to see you all. It would be hard to express my full appreciation of your willingness to give up a portion of your Thursday evening to join your neighbors that includes all of us in this special informational session of the common council. Tonight will be about our collective learning. Our shared access to the same information. And having been presented with a baseline of facts. As well as a list of proposed actions, timelines, costs, and current and projected financial capabilities, we'll open our meetings to public comment at its end. Immediately following my remarks. Wendell, our architectural engineering firm will provide an update on the plans in progress for potential use of the parking garage. Property, and we will be given a more granular level of detail on the proposed design and construction. There will be estimates of the costs for different elements of the project. And we'll review the various funding options on the table. The money in hand. What we anticipate. That which we hope for. And the shortfall to be addressed as determined by the scope of the final project. We'll discuss the anticipated demolition of the garage. The steps in that process and the timeline. Twenty-seven Market Street, the demo of that and its title. Incoming conversations will talk about what that will look like, how it will impact Market Street and downtown and pedestrian and vehicular traffic as well as potential development and housing. Before I turn it over to the folks from Wendell though. Like to take a moment for a personal observation. The people you see in this half circle of chairs here. Are your neighbors. They're not career politicians. They are civic-minded neighbors who have all but volunteered their time to serve the public good. No one here has an agenda that isn't reflected by their understanding of what is best done to enhance the lives and the livelihoods of those they represent. If you are a citizen of Oneonta. If you're a business owner whose commitment to the community informs and makes more vital our downtown. Your interests are represented by your neighbors. These neighbors. And so armed with your well-informed suggestions of what should be done. And how that vision best advances the cause of Oneonta's better future, it is incumbent upon you that you make your sentiments known to your council person. Respectfully, always, of course. Deserve it because theirs is the weighty responsibility of this moment. In the coming months, they will be considering debating and voting on some very serious and consequential proposals. How those votes go. What is passed? What is not passed? On those boats, the trajectory of Oneonta will be changed. No matter what the boat. It will have a consequence to everyone who lives here, visits here, does business here, or might potentially move here. It will have consequence to our economy. And to the health of our city's finances. In these coming meetings, there will be consideration of a two-tier garage. And a developable foundation. Or of a single deck. Or something less. There will be discussion of a robust and bustling center of transit activities. Or a bathroom and a ticket counter or something in between. There will be talk of a bond. A ten million dollar bond and how we pay for that. How we ensure that we have a high level of maintenance on whatever we build. How we can lock in a transportation system that supports long-term parking on the periphery of the city. How we can ensure that that transportation system becomes increasingly self-sustaining. And how we can make certain that downtown's premium parking spaces are always available to shoppers and those with business in the city. And that we talk of paid parking. And many reasons given for and against its adoption. This is a lot. The people around this day are assuming a significant charge. It is their responsibility to make the choices that they deem are best for their community. And best for the city in this moment and for the future. They are your representatives. And I know they will endeavor to reflect the wishes of their constituents as best as they're able. Whatever gets decided here. It promises to be riveting. It will be impactful. Oneonta's future will be changed. I hope and encourage you to be a part of that conversation. Respectful dialogue. That's the expectation. I'll be politicking for my views naturally. But in the final vote, it's your voice. It's our voices together. This is democracy. And these are your representatives. Thank you. And with that, we'll turn it over to Wendell.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council for having us here tonight. I'm gonna probably stand right here. Is this okay? Okay, great. So tonight, we're here for the Market Street Improvement Project. We're gonna give you some updates. We're gonna share some more information. And we're gonna kind of take you through a little bit of history and then moving forward. I'm Elizabeth Golden with Wendell. This is Sean Beechey, our lead architect and senior associate. Thank you. Okay, so on the screen, slightly hard to see, but as kind of reflecting on what the mayor just shared. This is a lot. This is a big project. This is the overall plan. And so it takes you from Main Street to James Georgetown Avenue to forty-seven Market Parcel, where the parking structure currently sits. As well as Water Street and Water Street Extension. With the project plan. And the overall site, there are the major components, and that's what we're gonna talk for tonight and provide some updates on.
I think the other thing, just a note on this plan is, so this was the preferred selected site. We had looked at previously. Numerous sites in the downtown area. I can't even remember the total number, but. Again, this was the final preferred selected site based on review of all the other sites in downtown. So you may have questions like, where else did you look? Previous presentations had shown like all the different areas that we looked, what could fit, how could it work, and what was the best for the city and best for transit? So again, this was the final site, just so kind of give everybody a little bit of background.
So the first project component we'll talk about is the Market Street streetscape. Again, that's from Main Street to James Georgetown Avenue. We've completed those schematic sign back in the fall. We're working through the detailed design phase now. And where we've identified a base bid and an alternate bid. And so the base bid will be from Main Street to Broad Street, and what that means is we'll sign the full main to James Georgetown, but that the contractors will bid on a specific scope. And then they will share another cost for Broad Street to James Georgetown Avenue, and that gives the city the option to see how the bids come in. Based on the bidding environment at the time, and you have the ability to either report with something more or something less depending on cost. Additionally, we are in constant meeting and coordinations, not only with the city, but with the DOT and local utilities and NICE Deck. Here is a shot. We're gonna show you a couple renderings and what we've been working on. But this is your existing. We are standing at the west end. You can see green earth just on the right where they planned a photo patio, and you can see how the existing street it kind of lines with some trees, some sidewalk and so on. So let's show you what the proposed plan will will potentially look like. So here we're widening sidewalks, we're narrowing the roadway, which will slow traffic. We're providing some more, we're doing pavement markings to provide the parallel parking on the road as well as keeping people in their lane with the center striping. You'll have new lighting. And green space. This is standing on the east side looking at the existing forty-seven Market Parcel. And the next slide will show us the improvements that are planned. And so what you'll see in this image and in this view is a raised crosswalk, and you can kind of see the person on their bike. So throughout what is planned right now in the design, throughout the core, the main Market Street corridor are these raised crosswalks. And so one of the first things we do when we do streetscape is to identify and make it very pedestrian-friendly and safe. And that's just one example. Sean, do you want to?
Sure. So the next couple slides here, we're gonna talk about the forty-seven Market Street Parcel. What you're gonna see here is again, it's the parking garage, water street to the top, transit center, and then Market Market Street bottom, sorry. Water Street is the top, I said it wrong, I apologize. So the schematic design has been completed. In that we have the demolition of the parking garage and existing structure, including Water Street Extension, permanent bracing and the new retaining wall. Permanent bracing goes along this retaining wall here and actually went over here, that's on Chestnut Street Extension. And then the new retaining wall for the turnaround in Water Street is at this end on the east side. The new stair elevator tower, sorry I'm pointing here, so hopefully everybody can see me. The new stair and elevator tower here will replace the one that connects the Main Street Bridge that currently connects to the parking garage. The new one will go in there. That will have an elevator and a stair. And the transit hub again, kind of see in the center of the island here, and then you have the new bus island. And then the bays here. Now the bays also include or two spots for trailways. Currently, we're showing here whether it is, there's the option for a two-level parking deck, which one would be a grade and then a second level to the parking structure, or just an upgrade structure, and then the potential for a future development to go up, and whether that's one level or more depending on the development that would occur there. Those are opportunities we'll talk about a little bit. The whole site has new utilities that came in. Obviously, you can imagine it's been there for a while, so there's a lot of utility upgrades that are needed for this area.
It's been by a while. He needs original.
Sanitary storm water, and then a lot of electrical work. There is a lot of transformers on the site that have to be relocated by next year. And then landscape improvements, landscape improvements for the top chestnut, along water. They're down towards new access road for the parking garage that is access off to Market Street and then on the transit plaza itself. Again, as we mentioned before, there's a lot of ongoing needs coordination with the city and all the utilities for it. This is a just an aerial view of the site. Again, you can see the parking garage. Water Street is on the upper left, new stair tower here that would connect to the Main Street Bridge. Transit Center Plaza here, and then you can see the two-story Transit Center. This is a view. You're looking west on this, so standing east looking west. At the Transit Center. This is standing in the bus loop looking at the Transit Center. This would be the main waiting room and offices for transit here. And this is standing on the Transit Plaza itself. This is looking east.
Thanks, Sean. And then moving up to Water Street, which is the last major significant component of the project, we did also complete the schematic sign on Water. And as Sean mentioned and covered in some of the forty-seven Market Parcel, we're taking out the existing garage, and in doing so, that removes the existing ramp right now that is on Water Street. We're gonna do that, make way for two-way traffic. We'll also be expanding the at the very east end of Water Street and creating a turnaround for vehicles since we're creating two lanes. Because of the Water Street Extension bridge demolition. We'll be making other aesthetic improvements as well, so pavement treatments, new lighting, green spaces Sean mentioned, decorative fencing and so on. As well as utility improvements, so drainage, water, and then electrical as we coordinate with them in a second. And this is a view of your existing Water Street now as we stand toward the Chestnut End looking east, and here is a rendering of the proposed Water Street. You can see the different concrete treatments. We've opened it up. To be curbless. We've added some more green space and really made it a walkable pedestrian sort of pathway.
Yeah, as Liz mentioned, this is a curbless one, too. Again, trying to increase accessibility on the street, make it more pedestrian-friendly at different times for whatever events might occur. And the parking garage entrance, which currently is down at this end on the far east side, is now located on the west side. So cars don't necessarily have to traverse to go into, to go into parking. The option is to turn around at the end if you drop off something like that that's there, and you'll have parking, as you can see. Alongside that would be striped this time, so trying to really integrate it a little bit more into the city street because it would be a two-way area.
In completing this schematic design, one of the major next steps is to have a cost estimate performed. And so this plan simply just shows you as we talked through the major components and it just identifies them by color. So there was a Water Street component, a new a new jack in all the work in the green that goes with it, all the associated work, and then the Transit Hub and Bus Bay Island with the blue.
So you'll see just as Liz said, Water Street, you can see the turnaround at the upper right, the parking garage, and then the new access road on the right-hand side here, which is in a similar location as Water Street Extension, coming up in that access is the lower level of the parking garage.
So now we're providing you with the updated baseline cost estimate. But the last time we were here was in February. This is June. We are at a total, you'll see the Market Street streetscape work, the two-story and the transit hub facility, building, bus phase, and then that sort of what we call everything, parking garage demolition, the new one-level deck, Water Street and Water Street Extension work. And so those are your major costs of money. It is totaling right now is a thirty million dollar project. And you might remember when we were here in February, it was price tagged at about twenty-five million. We've highlighted on the screen this thirteen million dollar number, and we'll review for you in the next slide the breakdown of that. So while no one likes to talk about cost increases, it is a reality. The bidding construction environment is still volatile. But not only that, and of course adding on escalation, there were also some scope changes in the schematic design. So and you can I'm sure you saw from the renderings, the the potential. And so now we always like to work together with the transit and the city to provide options and allow you to then coordinate those with the budget. So while we talked through some of the increases specifically, as I mentioned, when we were here in February twenty twenty-three, that thirteen million dollars that you saw on the previous slide was about seven point seven. Specifically for parking garage demolition, the new one-level deck, Water Street and Water Street Extension work. So focusing on that, some of the items that changed thereby driving up the cost slightly, number one is the demolition scope, and so honestly, the the cost increased and that's where footage of the demolition. And in addition to that, there's some other utilities that need to be handled and so on. The next one is the new retaining wall in fill, so that was actually a new scope item. And that's where, because we're demolishing the Water Street Extension Bridge, we need to essentially contain that wall. So we need that that includes, you know, the foundation, the wall and all of that. And so within that, there is a one million dollar delta.
Right. One thing to note on that, originally the access was going to be on the east side of the parking garage. It was moved back to the west to give more potential for Water Street to have pedestrian events, things like that, where cars can still park, but not necessarily get to traverse the street. When you're doing that, this is, if you know right now, delivery trucks can't go underneath the Main Street Bridge, right? They have to back up. Order kind of eliminate that backup. That's where the roundabouts came around, so that turning. So we're trying to improve the safety of it, improve the usability of that street. So that's part of it. So all that comes with the cost, as you can imagine.
And then the stair towers. So additionally, right now, what you've got is an open stair tower there. You'll see some increase in cost here because it's in this design imposed as a structure. So it's got glass, and it's got walls, and it's got, you know, other things that right now you don't have.
It's, it would be fully, so in preparing for future development above and trying to have this stair and elevator tower be part of that future development to bring potentially more housing downtown. This is now an insulated stair. It becomes like a building. So it has heat, has insulation, it's gonna have full security. It is not an open stairs. You're not gonna have wind and snow coming into it at times. Again, trying to improve this accessibility, one to Main Street, but two, potential future development. We know there's been a lot of problems in the stairs. We're trying to make that a better place for the residents here who will use this.
Thanks, Sean.
Sure. So again, parking garage increase, quite honestly. The cost went up in parking garages. There's, there's really not a little bit of change here and there, a little bit of complexity because now the parking garage is a notch out of the corner, which for, for that turnaround, that adds a little complexity, not that much. So when we do our estimate, Liz will get into this a little bit later. You know, we use mains, which is the form everybody uses to kind of figure out the cost of things. We call contractors, we call manufacturers, we get prices. Those prices just continue to go up. So even as we have escalation in our estimate, the prices are continuing to rise. I can't really tell you much more than that. That's, that's the honest god truth. We do our best. It's just prices are going up right now. And many of you, the best analogy I can give you is if you call a contractor now and say, hey, I want to get a price on something, you call them back a month later, that price just went up again. That's what we're seeing. So I'm sure many of you see that as you do your own renovations, prices going up.
And then the Water Street also actually got an increase in the scope of work. So before it was a no-one overlay and was really just we're just doing some minor improvements. And now actually it's a significant change, right? We've, we've added that turnaround at the end. We've changed pavement types. We've removed curves, so it's all curbless. We've added some more space for art and decorative fencing and really taken out that pedestrian feel opening up, whether you've got farmers markets or what have you.
These were utility work.
We've got some drainage and NICE Deck will be in that street as well, water and drainage though, and then, you know, with your deck and tying that all up. The next site in this lane is site for building and landscaping. And this is for, this would be for things like the access drive on Market Street on the ground level when you come into the ground level of the garage. There's a raised area, for example, and so that's like a raised crossing. So it's for pedestrians, we created that accessible path from Main Street down to Market through the stair tower. Then as you're coming toward the front of the site on Market Street, we've got things and improvements like that, so for safety for pedestrians. And not only that, but as well as bus traffic and just kind of maintaining that balance and that, that that dance. There's some additional utility work. So now when we replace the utilities, we're also improving them or increasing size in some, because if you do have the potential for development above, you want those utilities to be kind of set and ready to go. Lastly, as we're now talking about the existing garage being demolished sooner than the new work starting. We have to prepare a separate demolition bid package, right? And so there's a cost that comes with that. And, and from a contractor standpoint, from a designer standpoint, there's about a ten to fifteen percent additional cost. And that's what that four hundred thousand represents. And that's for things like contractor mobilization and demobilization and because now you're doing it twice. You have a demo contractor out there and you're not moving right into your new work because it's not done all at once. I think so. So while none of us really liked the cost increase on the project, we actually spent a good amount of effort going through some value engineering, looking at cost reduction options or phasing or future and, and really sat down with the city and identified, okay, well, what are the significant amounts of money that, you know, what, what else can we do? And so what you see on the screen are some of the major cost reduction options in addition to what we've already have a list of. So now this is on top of that. And so one is building a surface lot. Not, you know, getting the potential for something future above, whether it's a parking deck, confirmation parking deck, a residential or what have you. But that does offer about a five point five million dollar savings. And then if you look at, the next one is Market Street Reductional Scope. And that's what we talked about earlier, why we identified Broad Street to James Georgetown as that added alternative, so that the the city is not required to award that up with a contractor, and that is another option. So if you decide to just build the west half of Market Street at once and then leave the, the alternative end of the east end of Market Street for future, it gives you that option, and we identified a cost savings of one point three million in approaching it that way. Lastly, reducing the Transit Hub, as you saw in those images, it was, you know, two-story, it was quite a bit larger. If we reduce that and, and kind of reimagine the program and, and the program in the building just means kind of like what spaces are in it. We, there is the potential for about a two million dollar savings. So right now, if we go back and think back to that updated baseline cost, that thirty million dollar total. If we add these cost reductions to it, which is about eight point eight million, we get down to twenty-one million. So you might ask, well, how does that relate to the funding that we got? And I'm gonna ask her to, to touch on that.
Apologies for, it might be a little difficult for people to see the screen. We did pass out this sheet to the council members to see a little better. So as Liz and Sean went through, obviously our, we look at column E. Let's just sit right down to the bottom, E thirty-nine, the total cost, thirty-five million, what we're showing on this. That was what we were at about a week ago. We'll be discussed with Wendell what sort of value engineering options there are. How can we reduce the scope without impacting the overall project and reduce that cost down? That's where we came down to the thirty, thirty point eight. So we did that initially, thirty point eight, and now we're talking about how do we bring this down to something that we can afford now? That's where the twenty-one point twenty-one million and change comes. You'll see that this number in, in column H, the revised cost, I'm showing twenty-two. Why? Line thirty-five, twenty-seven Market Street demolition, that's another project. It's, it's not the project Wendell's working on, but we know we, the city owns that building. We'd like to demolish it. Our current estimate for demolition is a million dollars. Previously, we had reported to council that being quite a bit higher in working with our other consultant on that project, Del Engineering, we're able to change some of the scope, leave some of the retaining walls in place. And really just bring the, bring the building down, leaving a level lot that could be used for temporary parking and then ultimately be hopefully in the future sold for a future development. So we, we're taking the approach that the ten million dollar general fund on that we talked about going up to. We are not proposing exceeding that. That's, that's our limit as far as the city is concerned, what we believe we can afford. So that one million dollar cost that we're talking about for the demolition of twenty-seven Market, we really need to include that in, in our discussion. So I've added that in there. I'm jumping back up to column J. And the J through N, really, we have different funding agencies on this project. The DRI funding is, is actually three different agencies, two of which are applicable in this project. Um, the DRI funding is, is actually three different agencies, two of which are applicable in this project, New York State Department of State. And New York State E S D and our state development.
Excuse me, I don't even know what, what you're referring to on that. I don't know what J is.
Right, I.
Is it up there or am I?
I, I apologize, I'm referring to the Excel.
Okay, thank you.
Jay's not showing up there. So yeah, thank you, Sean. D O S is, is the funding agency right there. E S D. And then D O T, Department of Transportation, and then any city funding. And then other, I can explain as we go down, there's a few other different grants that we have now or maybe see. Um, so looking at the D O S column. The first phase of our project or the next phase would be demolition of the garage and the site work associated with that. So creating that Water Street two-way street with a turnaround at the end, that work would need to be done in, in one phase. Uh, we're hoping to go to bid for that project at the end of the summer. That would be the next immediate step for, for the city. Um, we're looking to spend down the Department of State funding on that projects, um, as well as some, some city funding. We expect that by this time next year, that, that project would be complete. If not sooner, depending on contractor availability and what the schedule ends up being, that's sort of right. Moving down the parking structure. What we do there is, is essentially going to be funded by the city. Um, with this ten million dollar bond. As well as we have a two hundred ninety, just about three hundred thousand dollar grant from New York State D C as a zero emission vehicles grant, which is to install some charging. Uh, level two charging station infrastructure there for electric vehicles. Obviously, we want to plan for the future and that become more, more and more of a thing. We're going to need to be able to provide that. Uh, downtown. Um, looking at the revised total cost, we're showing one point eight million dollars here. That's, that's showing a surface lot going back out of. Multi-level structure. Um, as Liz and Sean explained, there's significant savings that can be realized if, if we go with a single level. Versus multi-level. Moving down to the transit hub section, um, New York State D O T Transit Funding, we have in hand three point eight, just about three point nine million dollars. The total funded need, funding needed through, from D O T for this phase. As, as, as far as what we're showing is six point one million. That's a four million dollar transit building. That would be the one-story reduced size option. Um, and we'll, I'll come back to that as we get down to the bottom. Uh, with the D O C funding, I think there is a ten percent city local match. So that's where that one hundred twenty one thousand city funding. Uh, comes into play. Water Street Site. We're showing at one point six million. That would be funded by the city bonds, general funds. Now, moving down to the. Architecture, engineering, construction management, we're estimating about two and a half million. In total, that is being funded in part by D O T, in part by. Uh, the city. Uh, and possibly, that, that may end up being funded in part by, uh, Department of State. Nice egg electric relocation. I think we touched on the fact that in the seventies, when the garage was built, the city granted permanent easements to. Nice egg to allow their switch gear and transport within the footprint of the garage. So the garage, demolish the garage and build something new. We have to relocate those. Um, that's the cost that the city will have to, to bear. Temporary relocation would have to happen first before we demolish the garage. Once we demolish the garage, then Nice Egg can permanently relocate. Uh, when we say temporary relocation, that's poles and above ground lines that would go around the garage for a period of time until the new structure or lot. And transit building are constructed. We're estimating about one point six seven five million for that. Market Street Streetscape Improvements, that's where the E S D funding, uh, through the D R I, that's what that is for, the two point two five million. Um, we'd be matching that with some city contribution through the bond as well as about half a million through our state tour route and or CHIPS funds. That we get for street improvements. That's an annual source of funding that the city gets through the state for really anything. Uh, F F E fixtures, furniture, equipment, I believe, uh, that's for the furnishings that would go within the building. We're just holding an allowance line item of seventy five thousand. And showing that being funded by, uh, the city is a matching item. And then you have the twenty seven Market Street demolition, which. Um, we have three hundred seventy five thousand roughly, that's an estimate, um. Remaining out of the four hundred seventy seven thousand dollar grant. I'd have to, don't quote me on that. It may be a little bit off on that. Um, but that's about what we have left on the Restored New York Grant the city, uh, has. And the six twenty five would be covered by that ten million dollar bond. So just an important distinction is what types of funds are funding. The transit portion of the project versus everything else. So the transit fund in the city, the way our governmental counting works, there's a general fund. Which is where tax, taxpayer, uh, revenue goes, sales tax, those sorts of things. The enterprise fund, which is our transit system, is not funded on a regular basis by taxpayer. Revenue. It's, it's funded mostly by F T A through federal funds, obviously fares. Uh, we get reimbursed based on how many miles the buses drive and based on how many passengers ride. Um, and we get other sources of funding such as the capital grant that we have. Uh, we have applied for additional transit money. Uh, we're still waiting to hear from D O T, New York State D O T, which administers those funds that come through from the F T A. Um, we're hoping to hear sometime this summer and. Or no later in this fall. We're not really sure when we'll hear on that. We've asked for, uh. Five point eight five million additional. If we were able to get that full amount, that would allow us some. It would be in a great position, I think, to, to be able to do the full. Transit hub building project as, that we'd like to do, where we have all of the. Um, and it would look very similar to what you see in the images that we've shown tonight. If we don't get that, or if we get a portion of that, which is an option, it's, it's not an all or nothing. It's a, it's kind of a formula-based thing and it depends on how many projects are funded. Across the state and how much money is available and programmed. Um, and we don't know until, until they tell us whether we get anything or how much. Um, so if we get something less than the full amount, then that's when we go to our, our, um, scaled down version of the building. Or if, if we were to get nothing at all, we might have to look at another option, scale down even further. Um, but ultimately, our goal, our intent is to not spend taxpayer money, not spend any of that ten million dollar bond. On the transit building or the transit site improvements, if we can avoid it. There may be a need, you know, and that'd be a, a discussion that council will have a decision that council will make. If, if we had to consider doing that. Uh, but we want to stress that if it's ten million, it might be less than that, it might be more. We want to stretch that as far as we can with the other improvements, Market Street, the parking. Um, there are a few other smaller grants that we have applied for or will, or will be applying for. One is a D C street lighting grant. A small amount, maybe up to seventy five thousand dollars that would help, you know, with the streetscape improvements. Uh, we'd also be applying through Nice Egg for a development grant where, where they may be able to fund a portion of our decorative lighting. So it's another thing that might help, um, bring things down a bit more. So. Just recapping, going back to the total costs in the revised column. Including the twenty seven Market Street demolition, twenty two point eight million dollars, um. You know, just below that, there's. That the council can see, I don't believe we can see it quite on the screen. Are these balance numbers? So you'll see on, on the D O T funding line, there's a negative balance of two point seven million. That's negative because right now we're, we're not showing that additional funding, which we haven't received yet. We can't count on that until we hear back from D O T if we got anything or not. Um, so that, that's where, you know, it really depends on how much we get from D O T and there's got to be some flexibility there. Fortunately, we're not looking to make a decision to go forward with this project tonight. We have some time before we can, uh, we have to make a decision on what we're doing exactly. Um, and then the next column over the city column, um, you see there's a balance of nine thousand dollars. So basically showing that we'd be using just about the full ten million dollar, uh, bond. Of course, if we do get. Enough transit money, there's, there's potential that, and depending on where bid prices come in. There's a potential we'll spend less than the ten million. Uh, if prices come in higher than we're estimating now, then we have to adjust our scope again. That's why we have bid alternates, um, those sorts of things that. Give us the flexibility, the time of award to be able to make sure we go forward with the project and, um. You know, be stuck. So. Yes, with that, I will ask for any questions on the fundings. From council, or if, if, if you want to go back and talk anything more, please, before we go to questions.
Thank you. Do you have a, a schedule slide for agents so that you can please? Okay. Um, so in terms of timeline, we talked about completing this management sign and that's my offer generated. That's what we're doing today tonight. We've gone, um, through a good portion of the value engineering and, um, we hope to be complete with that, um, this month. So that we can execute, uh, the construction documents for bid this fall. Council order contract for the garage demolition will be the fifth of this year. As, as Sean and Greg mentioned, um, that happens and put in the yard or now, so they can get the street, uh, very soon. Uh, awarding the contract for the Market Street Streetscape. So you'll notice that these components are on similar timelines, yet slightly different. The Market Street Streetscape will be, that's a mouthful. Will be its own design package as well, because that's what we call horizontal work. So roadwork and, um, there's significant amount of storm. As well, that's being handled under the road and, uh, realigned. And so with that, um. That project has a different set of, of contractors than a vertical building does. Um, the hundred percent design presentation to the council will be in November. Awarding those bids in December. In terms of the demolition project, as Greg mentioned, um, the goal is to be complete with that by this time next year. And then, um, the estimated completion of the Market Street Streetscape work is by next fall. So essentially a year after it's, uh, it's awarded. And then lastly, the, what we've labeled as transit facility, that it includes sort of, um. The, the rest of the project. So it's everything on forty seven market and the Water Street work. Uh, that's to be, well, it's estimated to be completed, uh, December of twenty five, um, although we do believe, uh, that'll be improved. That's like. I think it's just the Q and A.
Yeah. Good. Okay. Well, thank you very much for the presentation, um, and council at this point will, uh, entertain. Questions and, um, solicit answers. So does anyone have a question they'd like to pose, Lynn?
Me, I think it would be extremely helpful if we could be given those slides right now. For papers for notes. I mean, it, all I've been given was a piece of paper and then what you guys gave us back in twenty twenty. So for me to take notes, it'd be extremely helpful. So is there any way that we can get those printed now? Um, Meyer City Clerk is taking care of that for us. Tonight was the first time I heard on the stair tower, that's now going to be heated. Did I hear that correctly?
That's correct. Yep.
So have you done a cost analysis of what that's going to be for the annual heating? For that, for that space? Did you figure what type of heating system that you would use for that?
Yeah, so it's going to be typical, like smaller units, just to keep it to a certain temperature. Again, keep it up, uh, because. And as we start to connect it, it may end up being sprinkled by development. So we have to make sure that the sprinkler box number or something like that.
That thinks exactly what I was getting at. So we're going to go this route. And then, um. Just overall annual costs or what it's going to take for city staff to keep that clean. And we found out through a project of, um, public private partnership with Springbrook, that we're spending fifteen thousand dollars a year just cleaning the arcade. So I would curious of what it would cost us to clean this stair tower on a, on an annual basis. I didn't hear mention of the Water Street Waste Station. I have a business owner here tonight, um, in the front row. We'd like to hear about, uh, what are we going to do with the waste? Um, it's been an eyesore for many, many decades. Um, so if you could elaborate on that, that'd be great.
I never thought I'd talk about garbage so much. Um, we've had a few different, uh, potential solutions for that and under this management sign. And discussions with the city project team and, and once, um, Harry gets back, we can pull it back up on the screen and, and show you. But, uh, the approach right now is to handle it with a trash compactor that would sit down below actually on the Market Street level. So there would be no more enclosed dumpster area with totes on the Water Street, uh, itself. Because as you saw in the rendering, the intention is for that to be open and, um, attractive for people and nobody wants to smell that, right, or see it. So the thought was that it would shoot down, recreate a chute from, um, now that new turnaround area of our water. Toss your garbage down and it goes into the trash compactor and it's approached and picked up by the, um. The garbage, uh, company from that end.
They just brought you from the new access roads to lower level parking. They access it, pick it up there and then.
And so would that stay in the plan for both having, um, the parking garage and or the parking lot?
Yeah, as far as I'm, I know, yes.
So those costs.
There's been no change. Yeah, I'm going to move on to. Additional questions, council? So question for you all, can the, um, Parking Street Elevator Tower, Parking Stair elevator tower be phased in? Or is that part of the Water Street, um, retaining all, the, the one tower, what we call it, Tower B, uh, that connects to Main Street. Uh, Bridge would have to be done in the beginning because, uh, otherwise the bridge. Would not have access anywhere. So that would have to be done, uh, in the beginning. Like that, it would be phased in at some point as the demolition of the garage goes and the stair tower goes, then that would be phased in.
It's part of the new work. So there may be a short period of time between the demo and we were demoing the new work beginning. But that stair tower with the elevator is the accessible path from Main Street down.
And it, and it would connect to Water Street, uh, directly across. So it doesn't rely on the parking garage to build for the connection. It's, it is connected to Water Street, to the bridge and then down to Market Street.
Thank you. Um, question for you, Greg. I know you mentioned, um, the nice egg. Let her pre-location. Is it any possibility at all of grant or any kind of aid or help with that? You know, it's a significant chunk right there, one point six estimate.
Not that I'm aware of, uh, any grant for that, um. Funding source for that other than you can buy our city. A D O S funding, which is for the garage slash transit.
Further questions, council? Yes.
I'm just trying to, yeah, uh, council of the days question. Um, you had mentioned briefly in your presentation about utilities under. Um, Water Street and Market Street. So my question is about how those utilities connect. So if we have virtual group demo, they will need to move the utilities that are associated with the garage. Where else are they going to need to do work? And so what are we kind of setting ourselves up to? They have no choice to approve. Does that make sense?
So are, are you getting at, uh, what areas would be closed down for the work?
No, so if we approve demolition, Nice Egg has to do the work. They also have to do work on Water Street. Are we then kind of married to? Things having to happen on Water Street because Nice Egg is going to have to move those utilities in conjunction by the parking garage?
Yes, you're going to get to Water Street. Um, it is not our intent in the way that we thought about sequencing so far and that we can contract or approach it. But it's, it's, um. Water Street would be the last, uh, area that Nice Egg would come in and actually, um. Dig up their line to do the permanent work, right? Because as Greg mentioned, temporary work is all overheads with holes and lines, right? Um, so in terms, sort of speaking specifically about electric, then, then they said work or.
Or any utilities that are relevant, that's the one we know about.
So the work on Water Street, uh, when that ramp comes down, um, it makes sense to handle some of the drainage that can, um. Replace and add the drainage structures so that you're capturing what you need to and providing proper drainage from water down. So that work though will be done, um, mainly on the south side of water. So closest to where the parking garage is now, where that we're taking the cars. Um, and then once. Water Street, uh, we did the remainder of the Water Street work. So it'll be a temporary period where it's closed, then it'll be temporarily open to local traffic. And then it may need to be closed again while we actually. There's not a ton of utility work in terms of, uh, water, um. There's, there's no sewer or anything like that. It's mainly water up there for us and then the electrical. Um, down on the, uh, where the parking garage is right now. Are you interested in that as well? Yes, that's fully utilities. And so, um, part of what. Yes, that's fully utilities and so um part of what needs to be done is. Once that uh building is demolished and the. Areas sort of torn up, there'll be some temporary connections that need to occur because for power and for um sanitary and sewer and water. There's gonna be a water low uh relocation for part of the water line that runs um sort of where. Water Street extension is right now. Preparing that for a future um the future stair and elevator tower that will go up, maybe kind of get that line out of the way of that building. Um, the other work that needs to be done underneath the structure now, um which will actually be in the new work package, so not under the demo work. Is the sand, uh excuse me, the storm, and so we're actually demolishing existing storm system and putting it in the storm system. And that's for not only for yours uh this night as as a surface lot, but for the potential of a future. Uh, vertical building above with the developer or a future saving project. Additionally, we're replacing and upsizing the sanitary line for that same reason. Um, and and not only, I should clarify, we're not only replacing those for future above, but also because they are um. Uh, original and improvements do need to be made, so it makes sense that while we're moving the site, we also handle the utilities. The benefits are your question?
Perfect, um further question?
Um, just. I'm looking kind of at the future, like no matter which way we kind of go with this project, we're gonna have some kind of legacy cost to go with it. And I think that'd be helpful for us as a councilman on how much money we're gonna be sending. So we don't get in the predicament right now.
Correct.
You know, matter whether we're, if we build it, if we don't build it.
Yeah.
To the goals, and I think we need to have that cost too, because you're gonna have to have that cost on top of what our bond payment is, which is on. Plus our city staff that's got a plow, so I mean, these are all numbers that we kind of need to go with this, and I was, I kind of wish that was in this presentation. But I think if, I mean, I think it's something really to look at.
Um, so while we can't predict all this, the city maintenance costs, we can give you an idea from experience and uh what we've built before. And how other uh cities and agencies have operated and then um. Maybe some comparison costs, um it it won't all be new costs, though I know you mentioned. So um it's not, it's not all going to be new, it's. Some of it might be different, some of it might be the same cost and then remembering as well that just because this is. Uh, you're putting a new building there, for example, so you're gonna have to deal with heating and so on, um. Those type of things now are uh efficient and advanced, so your 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 costs aren't going to be astronomical. But they need to be different or a little bit more than what you have though now because it is the open garage.
I think is uh the note of the parking garage, if both develop those above. Though it goes above and you don't have that plowing of the garage and salt of the garage, which is one of the basis, and obviously that this area of the garage this point, right? Um, so that would be a great benefit, hopefully that happens, so the new building go right above it, the whole thing and then it's covered, that's ideal, right? Because then you don't have, like, some of those costs, they do away, again, no matter what you build, there's maintenance, there is maintenance cost here, we have upkeep. That is there in the middle of it, there's there's no job we've ever built that you don't have anything, there's not one.
And of course, you don't want to get in the predicament of. Investing in this large project now and then not uh maintaining it as it should be each year, um I think is what you're getting. Maybe we had a discussion out in the hallway similar to that, it's also worth mentioning that um when we're thinking through and what we thought through already in the schematic design. Um, there's elements incorporated now that uh prevents you so while you may be paying more upfront. Your maintenance costs are lasting the long run um and or more efficient, so for example, what we've got proposed on the boss island. Um, is a snow melt system. And what that does is it it. Relieves, I think, the G P W from having to get out there every single snowfall um and shovel, plow, salt. Um, all things which damage whatever type of pavement you're working on, whether it's concrete, papers, whatever it be. So there's things like that that we're trying to incorporate into the design um without. You know, increasing costs that are just smart decisions and sustainable for the city.
This is operated by electric?
Yeah, it's a boiler system.
Oh, it is a boiler.
It's a boiler system and so um therefore.
Further questions, council?
Regarding the stair tower, um I agree, and this is the first that I heard, but it's any of those stair tower, I actually remember. In previous conversations talking about um kind of safety standpoint, it being better that the tower is both more open and more visible. Um, so I understand the need for the change, but I'm concerned about the security, so I was hoping that you could speak more to that.
It it will still be visible, so when we say and you close, we just mean it's, you know. Weather's not gonna get into rain, snow is not gonna get into tower, there is a lot of blazing that is proposed, a lot of lighting, so. Wherever you would be in the stair tower, essentially there is visibility somewhere into it through a place. Because I agree with you, stair towers, they have to be visible, they have to be bright, you know, that it's in the race, someone's gonna wanna use it. And hopefully prevent any type of vandalism, so. We are closing it, but that does not mean you cannot see into it and it's not uh brightly lit and visible through place. So that's what I mean when I say exposed, I don't mean.
And uh in the in this schematic drawings that we have some um elevations that show you essentially what that would look like. You can see how um sort of open and both the sight lines and all the way around it. Um additionally, with better lighting and on C C T V uh security.
Security.
Yes.
That was, sorry, yeah.
So along the lines of security, is it just in the tower or is it throughout?
Throughout.
Good, and then.
For um I I understand there's cameras uh there now, but the intent, whether it's a surface lot or something, it's still above, is it there?
And L E D lighting, making sure that everything is lit, whether it's the lot or the garage.
Absolutely.
Further questions, council?
Okay, yeah, so the um separate demo package, she had mentioned that it's four hundred thousand dollars and I see it reflected in our. Project estimation here under our picture and query construction management. You can imagine that you are also doing, because you have to do separate state packets, so if that four million dollars goes to your contract to your firm, no.
A portion of it does, okay, right, um so we're preparing a separate set of bid documents, um pulling out specific design, separating work. Um, and a portion of that, so that ten to fifteen percent that I spoke of. Um, when you separate uh sort of work packages is a combination of contractor costs. So I had mentioned um like mobilization, demobilization, which means when they come to the site, they set up and then they leave. Um, so you'll be incurring additional costs there simply because it's a separate set of work that happens earlier than the rest of the work, right? Um, it does include some consultants, design fees to specifically put that package out separately. Um, and uh other, I guess I would file them under miscellaneous um contractor costs. So there's things like overhead, there's things like um. Uh, general conditions and their insurance and um that falls over that.
So they also have to install, not necessarily temporary fencing, it's more permanent, because depending on when the package is overlap. When the next contractor comes in, after the demolition contractor's done. If it was a typical construction site, you had temporary fencing that's maintained by a contractor, now when they leave, it has to be a secure site for them. Everything has to be secure, so there's, there's some overlap, to be honest, that's part of what you're paying for, that falls into that. Yeah.
All right, at this point, thank you very much, don't go anywhere. At this point, I'd like to invite our gallery. Thank you for the question of uh our representatives here from. And Liz, or if you have a question uh for a city administrator relative to. Uh specifications, uh the numbers that he may be able. Thanks you. Uh, answer those questions, this would be a great time and just if you would just introduce yourself and uh where you live and um. A couple, three minutes would probably be a good length of time for all of you, so if you would.
Hi, my name is David Grant, I uh live on the thirty two Chestnut Street. Um, just a quick question, I've been concerned uh when listening to all this, uh what's the current parking garage? Parking spaces and how many parking spaces would be in the new one, when we have a a snow emergency? The current one is at capacity in full, um so. I mean, we still don't have a parking issue when there's a snow emergency.
So I'm gonna answer part of it, I don't wanna correct you to parts of it, um your existing garage is about four hundred, a little over four.
Thirty three.
Four thirty three, thank you, I was gonna say four thirty three, oh, cool, um the. In the schematic plan with the surface uh parking and then the one level deck is about two hundred.
About two hundred.
Um, so there's two hundred uh. Parking space difference there, however.
Oh, for two hundred for the.
Um, yeah, so sort of address the concern about snow emergencies parking, it's a good point, um certainly, that's the the only time that the parking garage is completely full. Um, that I've seen, especially, you know, over the last two and a half years, I've really been paying attention. Um, what we did two years ago, we offered a shuttle, which we're actually doing now, but during the winter, we offered the shuttle when there was a snow emergency. That went through New York Parks, Damascus Hill Parking Lot, it wasn't utilized then, because it really wasn't needed, we thought it might help, but. We ended that, that would certainly be available this winter and moving forward. Um, we we can clear that Damascus Field Lot, we're talking about possibly chip ceiling and and striping it, so it's a little bit easier to find your way around. And get organized, but that would plot provide a place for people to know where presently or previously they went to the parking garage.
Yes.
I'm wondering if the council has considered the possibility of a different location for the transportation center, particularly the old railroad station. Now still alone is in whether purchasing it and renovating it would be uh cost savings and long term benefit. Given historical and logistics of the place and also the potential to use that facility for a variety of purposes, maybe using imagined. Uses such as for tourism or an information center, car rental, any number of things, may maybe related to the historical, systemic. Uh, very oriented historical center as well, but uh if the council would consider the possible use of that. Facility at the transportation hub, I think it might be a sure thing, savings as well as a long term benefit for the community. In a way that uh it would have been wonderful if the community had still be around house at the railroad. Like facility that would have attracted so many people over the years to come to this community.
So as I know that this was super early iterations of the escape.
Thank you for your question, um so uh national, I think four years ago now, um we did, we did look at. Training call um as like. And we actually did a the building conditions um observation review of it as well, seriously considering it. Because um we've done it elsewhere, it's great for a transit agency to then utilize and a city to utilize a building like that that is um sort of an I have, right? Um, a couple of things on that, when we were doing the layout, um believe it or not, the site itself. Um, so separate from the building, but the parking lot area was not large enough for the bus operation. And we must have done at least a half a dozen different um bus layout sketches and test fits. To see how we could maybe pair together sites next to it, or how we could bump out the street to even enlarge it to make the bus operation work. And um what what some of those uh decisions would have, uh or some of those effects rather. Would have been that the city would have needed to um. Acquire more property, uh property that's privately owned already, some which um these property owners aren't willing to sell. And um not only did we look at what we could do on the site there, but we even um kind of realign your road. So if you go back to your old maps and we've done a lot of studying about. We we even reoriented and relayed out basically where the road hits and and how Broad Street used to come down. And it was like a main sort of gateway. Um, even looked at sort of re re reimagining that and how could the train station depot with the site and and kind of. Making that as a solution to fit altogether, the bottom line there is there wasn't enough space. And it would have required um a lot of time and money on the city's part to have to uh go and then acquire those properties. And then further develop them, um so not to mention and and I think. Sean, if you wanna add here, but while it seems like the training depot is essentially super close to the existing. Um, parking structure forty seven market that we're talking about right now, it is just far enough away that um. If I can refer back to the downtown revitalize revitalization strategic uh initiative, you're looking for connection. And you're looking from that for that downtown from Main Street down to Market and and sort of um. Redeveloping the market street corridor to be something more urban. And so the train station itself was just far enough away where we're talking about accessibility and.
For the.
And right now, how convenient is it that it's right on Main Street and it's kind of close and easy for everyone to get to, and so the thought there was that. And from that our experience, it. Wasn't ideal, it wasn't as ideal as the current station uh location.
Yeah, uh, closer, you know, again, the buses would have had to park on the street, they would have, because again, the site is too narrow for the program. They would have taken up more street space and again, changed a lot, but it was what that it was under serious consideration by everybody again. We we did a building survey and looked at it significantly, it's a great building, so somebody does use it. Wish it would have worked out, but we could not make a promise.
Thank you very much, uh yes, Teresa.
Um, Greg, I was wondering, do you have?
Yeah, sorry, just for.
Oh, Teresa's Becky, I actually live in West Stony Anna, um but I own Teresa's Emporium and on Main Street, okay. Um, so, right, the parking study, do you have that yet?
The the parking study is an ongoing iterative process, um as we just presented.
That's not gonna be available.
Yes, the the goal of the parking strategies task force is to create a report that's presented to the council for consideration for how to implement paid parking. Or other parking strategies.
So about the, you know, the study that you've done as far as.
Study I I've done is collecting data, that's Excel format, that'll be, you know, consolidated and put in a presentable form, that'll be part of that report.
Okay, so about when do you expect?
Our goal is to have that report to council at the end of the summer.
Okay, um now you talk about parking um during a snowstorm. From what I understand, this is gonna be permit parking, a lot of it in the new area. Um, if that's the case, who gets to park there during a snowstorm? People with permits? Um, people that live in East End that can't park in their front of their houses, how does that work?
Well, one of the concepts of one in parking, if you have metered parking downtown. Um, on street and if you have uh hourly parking or all day parking in the lots or the garage. You know, you have to accommodate or want to accommodate residents and commuters, business owners, employees. And having a a monthly permit pass as opposed to have to pay hourly, obviously makes a lot of sense. Um, spaces wouldn't be designated, you know, this is your space as a permit holder, you would be, there would be certain areas that you are allowed to park. You know, for instance, a permit holder wouldn't be allowed to use their permit to park on Main Street. Or in, say, the Wall Street lot, because those are the most accessible to the most businesses, where interactions happening, that's where we wanna have high turnover. A lot of vehicles coming in and out an hour or two, whatever time they need to shop or dine and that sort of thing, not park there all day or all night. Um, whereas like in the lots is where we want those people, so that would be determined exactly how that would work, but that's the general concept as far as snow emergency parking. Um, there's, you know, the city's never guaranteed that that everyone can park their car in a city lot during a snow emergency, obviously, most people are able to get off the street. And a lot of people um in into their garage and driveways, and those who don't have that option, you know, we've allowed them to park. I think it would be a similar issue where you wouldn't need to have a parking permit to park in the garage or the lots. And again, with the Damascus lot, the New York lot, we've got huge capacity in New York Park, it's just a matter of how much we're able. And again, with the Damascus lot, the New York lot, we've got huge capacity in New York Park. It's just a matter of how much we're able to clear and how many spaces we need to clear to allow people to, to get off the street. So. I foresee that combined with the shuttle that would help connect people back to center city. You know, maybe being that concerned.
And permit, the permit parking, has there been any discussion about how much it's going to cost? I checked like Albany, it's like a hundred dollars a month. And I know they're bigger than we are, but. A hundred dollars per person that works there a month to.
That's not a number we've talked about. And in fact, we haven't really gotten to the point of talking numbers yet. We're looking at the technology that's available, what it would take to implement the paid parking system.
That's what will be helping the paper.
That's correct. Right. Both the parking permits and, and hourly.
Parking on Cooperstown is two fifty an hour. So if you have to do that here.
That, that, that seems unlikely to be Cooperstown level rates, uh, in the city of Oneonta, but, um, any, any further questions, Teresa?
Um. Yes, how many trailway buses come through in a day? Now, at this time.
Definitely six per day. Thanks, Dave.
Um, for the, before I, for the questions, Teresa.
No.
Also.
Um, Kimber Rogers, I'm one of the owners of Lux Studio, credit two fifty for me. Um, so for. The people that work on Main Street, a lot of times they work ten hour days. So is there specific areas that are included with all of this that would be more like long-term parking for me? The park at all, okay.
Yeah, um, we're gonna issue another update to our parking map. We, we sent a PSA out last week that, that had that and we're gonna issue another one and the mayor's been working on making that more useful. Public, so. Well, and I'm happy to talk with you personally or whoever else wants to give us a call and talk about where is best for your business or your residence, but there's definitely going to be enough all-day parking for addicts.
I appreciate this new map. It was a lot easier three. And I think that's the thing, like, I don't mind being shuttled. I don't mind getting to work early, but if I'm working till nine, I, if the shuttle's not going anymore, like, I don't want to walk all the way to New York Park. It just seems.
Yeah, just, let me just quickly, Deep Street Lot, the new section, I call it the South Section, is behind the new building. That's all public parking. I think there were some. People out there who maybe thought that was going to be private parking. It's all city parking lot. And that's open now. That's twenty-four hour all-day parking. So you can park there. Also, there's some all-day spots in the northern section, the deep slot. Um, we're gonna be adding some spots on Market Street. There's, and again, you've seen the map, but we're, we're gonna try to have a good mix of all day.
You do try and speak a little louder.
Oh, yes, I can.
Here, I'm not catching everything. You're answering, so be very helpful.
Good, I'm sorry. Um, yes, right.
Hi, I'm Leah. I, um, I own hair of the dog on Water Street and, uh, just like thinking of. Future, like, um, when this project starts, what's it gonna look like for businesses on Water Street? Like, um, I think of just like my day-to-day. I only have the one door on Water Street, so, and then, you know, it's, I work with dogs, so I'm thinking of like demolition, like big booms and is it gonna be safe? Do I have to shut down? You know, things like that, so.
So the best, best way I can say that, like, when construction, like, before that starts, obviously. We've got to be with all the home, uh, all the owners along the street to make sure you understand what's going on, coordinate it so that you do have safe access.
Yeah.
Obviously, with dogs, I understand that. Um. You know, it, it's not quiet, demolition is never and things like that. But again, that can all be worked through.
Yeah.
There's requirements contractors and again, there's gonna be points when it's gonna be difficult.
Yeah.
That's, that's the truth.
Yeah.
But they're gonna try to limit that as much as we can.
Yeah.
So as Liz said, when they knock down the, um. The ramp, that opens up a lot of opportunity because that's kind of under the new street. Or the new portion of the street. So you can do a lot of utility work there. So it does limit the disruptions of the entire street. It's great. Um. But again, like, once that plan kind of goes further on, we do have to meet with everybody and kind of sit down and see here's what's gonna go on and then get feedback because. That's how we're gonna know what's gonna work best for everybody. I mean, that's part of the collaboration. Want to hear that, want to work it out because. I know the city, you know, they want to work and make sure you, everything's okay, you know, it's.
Yeah.
Second, perfect. Never is there a construction, but.
There will be, uh, full traffic in the pedestrian or plans.
Okay, awesome. Yeah, that's what I was mainly wondering because with the Springbrook project, you know, we, like, I, I've worked through all of that construction and stuff, which is whatever we do, we gotta do, but.
Right.
I never heard from anybody about any of that. So like, going into work and then there's a crane hanging, swinging above. My client's heads, like, it's kind of scary. So just knowing beforehand is, would be so awesome.
Can I go to the back row? Uh, my name is Dave Cavanon. I've been here since nineteen sixty-four, not in this seat. I would like to recommend that this council please put cushions on these.
Sorry, Dave.
Anyway, we have a current problem. Right now, and the current problem is we lack parking. Excuse me, I'm sorry. We lack parking. Now, the suggestion that I have is. Number one, the shuttle in New York Park is fine. Is the only on a police department going to parole that, patrol that area? Because in my opinion with what's going on. In our country vandalism. Theft, it's inviting that if that's not controlled. I don't want to leave my car down there and come out of work and find out my converter's gone. Or somebody broke in is living in it. But I just don't want that to happen. You think it can't happen in the city? It can happen in the city. The other thing is I, I want to make a proposal to the council. Mayor, you've heard me say this. Until we have a new parking garage, there should not be any parking tickets issued in the city of Oneonta. That's my opinion. Thank you.
I just heard about this meeting this morning around ten o'clock. So I didn't know what to expect, what the meeting was about or anything like that. So while thinking about it this morning, I was thinking about all the conversations I've heard with a lot of people. So this is not directed to the new development, but communication and listening to the constituents of Oneonta. So let me start. Okay, so I meet with many friends downtown, we, for lunch and or dinner on the same day, depending. And for quite some time, the parking garage has been the topic of many conversations. With unanswered questions and concerns. So I'm sort of the messenger here. The facts. Uh, it's been reported through the years that the garage had been inspected. It's been reported in the bet in the last several years. The repairs have been, that repairs have been made. Therefore, the question which comes up and comes up, the question arises, how could there suddenly appear? Unexpected defects that caused immediate closing of the garage? Uh, who did the previous inspections? What were the dates of the inspections? What were the problems and were the problems taken care of? That's the questions that have been coming up. And if, as a homeowner, you would be asking those questions also. Fact. Parking changes have been made because we had to close the garage. For visitors and residents driving into the city looking for parking, where is the signage? To inform them of locations of additional parking in Neo, Neoah Park. And to inform them about the shuttle and its schedule, uh, yeah, and its schedule. I'm driving into a town. I don't know where the heck I'm going. What am I gonna do? Okay, fact, there's a lack of communication about important matters or there's only last minute notification from City Hall. Case in point, this meeting. For example, this meeting was not adequately advertised. Many people no longer get the Daily Star or get the weekend additions. Aggressing just for a minute to make a point. If I had asked, asked you, if I right now asked you to list the areas of city life that come under the domain of the common council. You might include parks, police and fire department, streets, permits, sewage, water, public buildings, seasonal items such as plowing and street repair. If we continue the list, it's almost endless. And with that in mind and thinking about communication between city and residents. Uh, I'll read the notice for the meeting in the Oneonta Star. And here's the notice from Wednesday. Oneonta City Common Council Special Session, six thirty PM. Common Council Chambers, City Hall, two fifty-eight Main Street. Which one of that long list we going to talk about today? We had no indication. So. Please, in conclusion, please listen to what people have. What, what people's concerns are about the need for a parking garage for now and the future growth of Oneonta. We were concerned at the big parking, um, committee meeting of several weeks ago. We were concerned from going three levels to two levels when after the current garage was built. That was three levels and we needed four. So now we're going from, how many years ago needing four, reducing it to two, and tonight I'm hearing one. Okay, and also in conclusion, think about, please think about communication, communicating better with the constituents that you represent. And this one, and, uh, thinking about. The overused but very important term of transparency. So, but before I close, I'd like to thank you for all the effort you put into this. Looking at all these numbers today and all the things you have to think about, I know are extremely, extremely time-consuming and difficult to learn all the ins and outs when you're not an engineer. But at the same time, we are humans and we need to communicate and you need to listen to us. And as I've said before, please listen to that business community. They have. They have ridden through the ups and downs of Oneana's prosperity and I don't know if the opposite of that, non-prosperity, they have survived. And the last, one of the meetings I came to, I said so-and-so's been in business for twenty years, so-and-so's been in thirty-five, and I was aghast. I've been in business for fifty years at my present location. Please listen to them because they, they have survived in an urban environment. And some of you have different jobs that have different pressures than wondering if you can pay your employees. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And Sophie Richardson, I forgot to say, one forty-three Main Street, uh, long-term resident businesswoman and, uh, what I'm, I'm Lord.
Thank you. Thank you, Sophie.
Uh, Bob Holstead, I live at three Center Street, Oneonta, and forty-seven of my eighty-five years, I've been here in the city. Um, I'm looking ahead to most projects of the stone. There's a part of the works that's usually hired to make sure the contractors do the specs that they did on. Is there any, who's gonna do that for the city?
Uh, well, as part of people, what else? Our consultants contracts to provide constructed administration services.
I mean, day-to-day, you know.
Speak back. Yeah. Uh, so we need provided, um, in our proposal, in our contract is a level of, um, onsite presence, observation and, uh, construction management. So that would be the day-to-day, that would be, uh, making sure the concrete, the structures that work. In addition to that, our design team wants a piece of that, uh, scope work as well. For architects and engineers need to come out and do their site visits too, to ensure that things are done properly.
That were true folks. Your staff.
Yeah.
Great. Um, do we have any? Yes.
Uh, my name is Nancy Matheson. I've only been here, I think, for three or four years, so hey. I have a couple of questions about, one. What are the car charging plans? I think you sort of mentioned it, but, um. Also, why can't the demolition of your next door, the, what is it, twenty-seventh? Why can't that be combined with the garage demolition? Wouldn't it be cheaper to combine them? And third, having looked at it, I think it is absolutely a missed opportunity. Not to extend this plan to include Stella Luna. And to, by hook or by crook. Obtain that empty space in between Stella Luna and foothills. And move the center of the city. You're talking about as it is. And not thinking about what it could be.
We're gonna take those, uh, as we can remember, the, uh, the first is the EV charging stations. So the charging stations, I, I can't say how many exactly there will be, but the, the intent is to put several of them, ten or more in the, the parking garage or lot that's, that's built.
Will they be by, uh, time, by kilowatt hour? Who's gonna, uh, get the money?
Uh, the city receipt, receives, uh, the, the income from that. Obviously, we're paying the bill for the electric. Um, so we, we would price it according to what the cost is, uh, to cover our costs. I, I can't say if it would be per hour or per kilo-on-hour at this point, the, um, the, the charging station that we have now, we have a, a set of two ports in the street parking lot. That the council had previously authorized, although we haven't implemented yet because it's been out of service since the construction project, it's getting back in service relatively soon. I believe the council would authorize a two dollar per hour charge for that moving forward. We'll revisit that and see if that's appropriate, given it's been a year and a half.
Two dollars an hour?
Two dollars per hour. Uh, we have to revisit that to see if that's, if that's covering our costs or what it is, but obviously it also depends on how many people are using the station. Um, the intent of installing that one, which we got through a grant, was to just introduce it into downtown. It's a, you know, emerging, uh, need and. You know, the pricing will, will essentially be priced to cover our costs. We're not looking to make a profit on that, but we need to cover the costs.
And Greg, I'm gonna ask you, we'll talk about the two demolitions, why we might not be able to do those at the same time. Uh, it may be a cost savings, but we have.
Right, we had progressed the twenty-seven Market Street demolition design package with a different consultant. It was just, it was, it had always been a different project. It wasn't associated with this. That one is probably gonna be ready to go out to bid a little bit sooner. By, by a little bit that, than the garage demolition and. Um, realistically, we talked about the, the concept of combining the projects and putting them out together, but we were advanced to a point with two different consultants that at that point. It would kind of be requiring some rework and I think it would have cost. More and taken a little bit more time and our goal is to bring down twenty-seven Market Street, you know, as, as quickly as we can. Um, and then that site's available for temporary parking, uh, if needed for. You know, during the construction of a, of a garage. But it's a good question, though.
Good. Thank you. Further questions, any? Uh, yes?
Senator Walsh, I'm, I'm pretty, pretty on Main Street. Um, between the new Springbrook Apartments and the new D Street Apartments, how many residents are you expecting?
We're, between the two of them, I think we're a little bit over eighty. Eighty, relatively, yeah.
And so if we went down to the one level parking garage, you said it was about a hundred spaces. And is that? For pretty much all the research, have you been taking that into account? I mean, just, you know, three quarters of those people won't have cars. The lot's pretty much full up.
Our expectation is, uh, that it's less than that three-quarter, but Greg, I'll let you talk about the.
Yeah, it's talking with Kent Horney, the developer of the deep street lots. Um, he's interested and thinks that they'll need about thirty-five parking, monthly parking permits for the residents. They have sixty-four units going in, so that's not quite, I mean, you mentioned three-quarters, so. I think that's based on his experience and other developments elsewhere that he doesn't expect quite that many of his residents to have cars. Um, you know, using that same percentage, fifty-five percent or so, and applying that to spring apartments, which are twenty-four. And these are all mostly singles. There's some doubles in each of them. Um. You know, you're talking another ten, ten, twelve cars. Um, so I, in, in the data that I, Teresa was asking about earlier. I have been projecting, um, some additional cars to people, residents living outside based on health developments and even beyond that. So we, we are thinking about that.
And then a second question, if we did go to one level, do we still need the, the stair tower that we were speaking about? If it's just a one-level parking garage? And what's the need for the stair tower for only one level?
Sure, the, so the stair tower does connect to the Main Street Bridge, so in order to keep that operational.
Yeah.
You, you would need the stair tower for that and also, I mean, it does provide accessibility because obviously Chatsworth Street is pretty steep, so somebody who isn't in wheelchair, that is a great mechanism for them to get down to it. Um, that stair tower would, uh, come down and would connect to Water Street. I realize you could do that, um, in the building right now that, next to the, uh, uh, Main Street Bridge. Um, but again, that's just another way to bring them down. If they're on Water Street, I might go down to Market and do that.
So how we explored putting some sort of elevator in that building that you're speaking of.
Oh, we say stair tower, wouldn't be stair and elevator. I'm sorry.
But I'm saying, um. If we didn't need that actual stair elevator tower and put an elevator in that current area where it. Where the current bridge meets on the first floor to get people to the second floor, what is that kind of? Where the current bridge meets on the first floor to get people to the second floor, would that kind of cover the accessibility aspect of things?
Instead of a stair, just an elevator, is that true?
No, no, I'm saying like. The building right now, where that, where it actually meets the bridge. If we put an elevator just in there compared to building a whole separate stair tower just to put an elevator in. Is that on the table? Is that?
I can answer that one. There actually is an elevator being installed there by Springbrook Projects. Paid for by the city through a grant agreement, so that that's publicly accessible as well as accessible or accessing their apartments. So in what we call the arcade between the end of the bridge and and Main Street, that will have an elevator. Obviously, it's gonna go from Main Street level down to Water Street level. It's not gonna be down to the Market Street level, which I think is really the need for the elevator at the stair tower. To be able to have that accessibility from the Market Street level up. And and obviously, as Sean was talking about before, if there is a development above, then that stair tower is part of that. So if you will hire and as you go and use to do that.
With the question, yes?
My name's Jody. I live in, anyways, um, do you guys have the worst thing right now that's going over to the parking garage? Uh, you wanna build a turnaround? That you're saying trucks can't get in there now and they get back up on the chest and extension. It's only so many feet, so how are you gonna do that and do that little turnaround?
Uh, Liz, Sean, you wanna?
Yeah, so the the turnaround occurs before the bridge. Uh, we've run the auto turn for the trucks to like box trucks to be able to figure out how to turn around. Um, so that occurs before the bridge, so they don't have to go underneath. So we've looked at the turning movements of vehicles and I mean, have it drawn up, it's.
Just a quick feedback on that. Um, what's the largest size truck that you've done the projections for accessibility?
I will check that. I don't remember the size of the truck. It was a box, not a semi. Somebody cannot do that.
Right.
That cannot happen, but I'll actually check on the side of that.
Yeah, because there's some larger, I mean, that's kind of like the delivery hub.
Yeah.
Or along Main Street. So you have some large trucks, not semis, but some larger box trucks, refrigerator trucks, things like that that go down that.
So as it gets bigger, they can do a three-point turn down there depending on how it is, depending on whether, if it's the middle of the day and there's a lot of people there, that's not ideal. Get that, right? Uh, you know, as you can point out with the bridge, the bridges that we we have limited movement into how to do that. Uh, we have looked at it, the bigger trucks would require a three-point turn, but we still find them backing down the street like that's right. The worst is the two backing down the whole street versus doing a three-point turn.
The goal that we're trying to maintain is not to change too much of how they operate now deliveries. And with, I understand larger trailer trailers may park on chest up. And then deliver, um. Additionally, the same thing, because we understand that the larger trucks, even fire trucks, can't make the bridge, they can't make the turn, first of all, and the bridge do look. Um, so addressing all of those, we can certainly provide, we we, uh, as we brand what we call the auto turn, which is our detract. We can provide those to the council to show.
I mean, we, you know, and that's, we've run it again, some trucks can make it and as you get bigger, they gotta do more.
Yes, Kathy.
Um, with the parking garage and it's only gonna be about one hundred and one hundred natural.
That's right.
You're losing maybe a part in spaces with three levels and you've got four hundreds. Was it four hundreds? Or, yeah, four thirty-two. Two, four thirty-two divided by three is a hundred and forty-four spaces on each level.
It it's a smaller footprint.
And it's a smaller footprint, so it's kind of short sighted. Not to put a third level on or to at least. Have it there. If you want to expand, every time you expand and you bring people down now, you're going to need some parking. So it there has to be a little bit more foresight for what's coming. And so pulling it back. If you, you said something about the east end of the um design, if you don't do that, you're gonna save eight million dollars. One point three, oh, one point three. Okay, I thought I saw it. It went from thirty-five to twenty-one.
Correct, with the the combination of the items was eight million dollars. So the, you're speaking on the east end of Market Street? That was the one point three. Okay, well, where do we need point whatever.
If you're saving eight million dollars somewheres.
Yeah, we're bringing the right thing.
You know, I'm just wondering why not um. Put the third one line, I don't know how much it costs. Does it really make that enough for a third level? Or at least prepare it for a third level, because if you want to expand.
Okay, right. So additional cost reduction options totally came, so that's a combination of. Um, a future deck, so moving forward with um only a surface lot. Uh, so that's a five point five plus the uh. Future east end of the Market Street, which is the one point three. Plus the reduction of the transit up to a one-story versus what it is schematically designed out right now, which is about a two million dollars. That's where we're getting.
So the surface lot is the, just the one level?
That's it, yes.
Yeah, still very short, so you can reach a lot of hundred parking spaces and you've lost. However many parking spaces go on these. So, so the county already did the movements about not having that part. And I know that you can walk or you can park three blocks away, there's parking three, four blocks away. It's very rural area. People are driving in from all over and. They want to come on the Main Street or as close as they can get to Main Street, get out of their car, do their business, get back in their car and go do what they need to do. Because we drive everywhere in big cities, you know.
Kathy, thank, so Kathy, thank you very much. Um, we're just very.
And I'm Kathy and I'm in with Teresa and Teresa's important.
Do we have anybody else that would like to speak? Yes.
Hi, uh, I'm Kelsey Raffinfeller of Yoko Boni on the on the Deep Street, so representing some offMain Street businesses that are impacted by the. Lot of everything to Deep Street. Um, I found out about the parking garage closing, like a lot of people, like an Instagram post or social media posts. And in that post, it said, go to Deep Street instead, which was like. Please don't. Uh, we already have enough trouble trying to get people in. Uh, one of the issues is with the construction, the one-way sign has gone away. Uh, for the way that that flow is supposed to go. Um, I have a toddler, I bring her with me. The parking or the parking lot there is completely chaotic at all times. Um. I just, I was curious why businesses weren't. Notified of changes so that we could at least notify our customers, our clients. And for us, this is our slowest time of the year. We get really slow when all the tourism comes in, which unlike our Main Street trends is not the case. And so right now, any parking studies are not going to be showing anything like what we're expecting in September when our people come back. Um, and you know, we've, we're just calling our way out of the lockdown. We have only been at full capacity since November. And so our classes are continuously getting more and more full, and same with the Y, the same with some of the other practitioners in the building. Our building is just getting more and more full as people are coming back to business. And there's nowhere for our clients to park because a lot of those parking spots are taken up. Um, by people who are either there all day because they can't be parking in the garage. Um, there is no talk about the Neo Park potential for a shuttle. Um, like that wasn't communicated well, so that information, we can't tell other people that and it's just. That it seems like there could be, I think, a lot of communication. Uh, that could go better, but then, um, what everybody, I think, almost everyone who's spoken has said is, is like this math problem that we're having where we're going from. Four hundred and thirty-two spaces that do fill up to a hundred, maybe. And of those, we're talking maybe even fifty of them are going to. Be with new residents and then of that, there's also the permitted parking for businesses. And I'm just not seeing how we could ever make hundred parking spaces work. And then on top of that, it's gonna be paid for parking. So if it's parking that you're paying for, as all these businesses on Main Street have to lift their costs. Their costs just to stay in business and keep tied with everything else that's increasing. Now we're adding a parking fee on that. So in my business, I just had to raise my single class drop-in by four dollars. If somebody now has to pay two dollars an hour to come to that class, that means there's a twenty dollar um outing. And then on top of that, it's probably gonna be a little bit more if they want to go to Main Street, which we should encourage. And so it seems like all of the changes are also tied into paid parking. And if you're paying to park and then there's less parking, it seems like we're basically setting ourselves up to not have any foot traffic downtown.
Appreciate that. So, um, I'll speak to the um, the communications, please. Uh, so again, as everyone knows, this, it seems like we've been talking this for a very long time, we closed the garage. So we're we're flying, trying to determine all the various parking areas that we can direct people to. Uh, finding the types of parking spaces that you were patient to park, finding new parking spaces. Market Street is a good example, about forty-seven of them there. Uh, we've just now instituted, re-instituted the two and four-hour parking around the plaza there and these people, the Carson Plaza, I don't know what it's called anymore. But except, but around the plaza, there's you've got your two-hour parking, your four-hour parking, the rest of it is twenty-four-hour parking. Um, the shuttle service is a brand new feature. We've only really been running it since Monday or Tuesday, Thursday. Um, so just even getting the information out about that in terms of map, I think I finished something on Tuesday. So we're flying, we're we're, and at this very same time, we're, we're, I personally connecting with. Uh, folks who own commercial, who own um service park. Uh, whether they're churches or their businesses or whatever, so that we might be able to turn it some. Um, short-term access over various days, we are working on a web app that that will. Um, go to the promotion of that word, I'm enlisting folks that want to volunteer. Um, Greg has done a wonderful job of counting cars. He continues to count cars. Um, I think when we get on the other side of the garden garage, it'll be five years from now, you'll still be counting cars because you're just, this is what you do now. But but I am enlisting people who want to count empty spaces in our lots, in the city lots. Eight Street and on the street, nine o'clock, one o'clock and five P M will wind up. Um, putting all of that information out in real time. Um, in those, in those hours, nine, one and five, so we can start to determine where our. Uh, where our most congested areas are in the city, what we might need to do around that, where our emptier spots are. The uh, communication around our shuttle service uh is something that. The days are long, um, that as soon as I can get myself a couple of hours, and I think that's certainly gonna happen between now and Friday tomorrow. That that even more so is going to be uh on my agenda to ensure that we're getting out that information. Social media is obviously a great place, but not everybody sees the same feeds. So we will be putting uh maps that are posters, we'll be advertising the things that we in fact have going on in town. We have an engagement parking committee that's coming up with various promotions and things for locals and for tourists. So we'll be advertising not only where the parking is, but also what's going on around town. We'll place those fairly regularly. You'll get tired of seeing my face. We'll get tired of seeing your eight or council member's face. Um, but we will get information about to you. It's going to be a challenge. I continue to say, because we need, we can invent what we don't have. We have what we have. We're gonna be creative. I I tell people the fact that our our parking, our slogan is our parking is inventive. But it's convenient. If you know where to park, you'll be fine. The key is make sure that everybody knows where to park. And that we know where our empty spaces are and our empty spaces. So until we get to the place where we find ourselves totally maxed out. We're not yet in the panic mode. I'm not saying we can get there, but we're not currently in a pack. Um, additional questions?
Jim?
Jim Seymour again. Um, as far as the the actual building and the transit hub, uh, the number is like seven and a half million for for the building? I don't know a lot for a small two or three building.
So.
Is that breakdown like something that we can look at and be like, why it's?
I I mean, so that the thing I can tell you, so all transit projects are binary combined, because every product on it is made in US.
Okay.
So you pay more for that. There's no way, that's the truth. Also, F T A requires building to be about a forty to fifty-year life building. You pay, so we have more durable materials to go with.
Okay.
There, there's just some other things that go into it like that, that, you know, that adds up quickly.
Okay.
Compared to other train facilities that we do across the country, I will tell you, I was comparing costs because I said, gosh. They do seem, I mean, we're actually less per square foot than other facilities right now. The costs are just going through the roof and again. It has to be durable, so we're, we're, and it can't just be, the the best thing I can tell you, like, it can't just do a typical floor, it has to be a floor that's gonna. If you, if you have to replace it for in ten years, then that's done incorrectly.
Right.
And so we can't just do like a B C T floor, like many of you might know that it's just a final tile floor essentially. That wears down, they have to replace it, it won't give a place. There's the money, F T is not gonna give, the transit needs more money to replace it.
Right, so it's.
That, all those durable materials add up to a box.
Okay, well, that information will be like disseminated through council, like you already have all that.
The the hard part on this is necessarily the, not, correct if I'm wrong, the estimate can't get released because then contractors would get it and say, well, I'm gonna. You know, like there's, because you want a fair bidding environment, right? So.
So the detail.
The detail, the best.
Right, until the, until the bid is submitted and it's like the the environment that the bid's been in because of the changes, fluctuations.
Yeah, because we might, quite honestly, we want you to be, well, I I know we all want you to get the best bidding price that you can. If you give too much information, then. Like a lot of contractors choose that and then.
Couple more questions, Bob?
Bob Prasowski, forty-three Church, Ward Seven. Um, related to the cost of the transit hub, I was thinking the same thing, how expensive it is. And I hope that Stella Luna can stay in the mix somehow of maybe being a, uh, just a part of the transit hub. Or if not, having all the, all the components of it. Uh, second, uh. I wonder if it's related to this project or is it simply the D R I? About the easier access for pedestrians between Market and and Main Street. Uh, or will, in the short term anyway, or or middle term, the uh, this. The walkway be the only place? I'm thinking of the famous Clarion fence and when, when that's gonna come down and. Um, people will be able to walk more easily between the two uh streets.
Yeah, but I can speak to that, Bob. Thank you. Um, the the Clarion gate and the fences, as you refer to it, that sidewalk that goes around the outside of the four-block building to Mother Plaza. We're working with Springbrook to um, get a permanent easement on that section for public access and also to install a fence. Rather than just a gate, the fence would keep people from, you know, going onto the Clarion or the Norks, I should all the Marx property. Um, and allow that to be open all the time, so we have that public access and that.
It's going around on effect that the the car turnaround.
Right, you know, that wouldn't be effective.
Uh, yes, Kathy.
Okay, well. Um, okay, I just want two quick things. One, to speak to the lady who's. Um, not aware about the shuttle bus, or I think of it as the new little bus, the little free bus downtown. I believe I'm the only person who has traveled on it, so um. I went round and round and round in order to report back to the community conversations group and now to all of you. It's amazing. It's wonderful. It's quick. It's easy. It's free. It's like. But to segue into the Stella Luna issue, I think that that bus negates the objections to the Stella Luna situation. The idea that there are six trailway buses coming there a day. I know, I'm from a large city. I'm I'm fairly new here and six buses is not a lot of buses. So to me, I am not convinced and I'm not, I'm not asking it as a question. I'm just saying honestly, I see no problem. And I think that the Stella Luna, um, becoming the transit hub would be a destination, would be charming and beautiful and historic. It opens the possibility of. A transportation museum there, of artwork, of all kinds of interesting. Inspiring things, so just wanna register that.
If I could say one thing, sorry, so uh, there are two uh, trailway bus bays, there are seven city bus bays.
That's, I'm from New York City. That's like now. Yeah, I'm, I'm not gonna argue it. I'm just forcing my opinion that it would be ideal.
Absolutely.
And not seven million dollars.
Yeah, so I've heard Stella Luna mentioned at least four or five times by um.
Yeah, so I, I've heard Stella Luna mentioned at least four or five times by, there's been a lot of discussion on that. So the city has been like very focused on combining trailways and the city buses together into one site. Like, you know, right now they're separate. They've, they've been separate for decades. You know, the trailways has been out of the park garage. City buses on, on Main Street. So I, I really think the city should look at possibly keeping them separate. Yeah, I, I understand Wendell's point. You can't really bring the city buses down to Stella Luna. It's, it's not big enough. There's too many issues, but what about possibly bringing trailways to Stella? If not, if Stella Luna doesn't work, you know, bring, bring trailways maybe to, you know, somewhere else on Market Street. But I guess the other big concern I have unrelated to Stella Luna is, you know, now we're talking about a, a solid or just a, like one story, you know, just one story parking, no, you know, just service parking. And it's a hundred spots, I, I've heard. So how many, like, what if we didn't build the transit hub at that location? We would go from maybe a hundred to a hundred and sixty. So you know, that transit hub, even though we're getting a lot of grant money, it's really cost, it is costing us money. It's costing us maybe sixty spots because it's taking up very large footprint. So again, I'm, I'm saying, keep the city buses on Main Street. Find a smaller spot on Market Street for trailways.
One more question?
Yes. I just want to say I have never had a problem parking in O'Leonton. Except maybe one time. And it wasn't a big deal. And if you want a pedestrian friendly city, you have to be willing to walk. We have to also obviously make allowances for people that are unable to walk. But for most of us, hey, walking is really good for us. You don't have to be right in front of your destination.
And very good. Well, I want to thank everyone for the respectful nature of this dialogue. Very, very impressive, very O'Leonton. So thank you very much for that. Council, we do have some business that we'll need to take care of. We don't want to. Maybe not only trail, maybe the.
Ask her, ask her. They're asking if you'll come to the. Good night.
It was just chance. Yeah, we're, this is still. Literally saying thank you, thank you. Folks, we do have a, a motion that Greg has written to that.
Okay, so, so as we talked about tonight, our next step. Our P A's project is demolition of the garage and we associated, associated a make of all work, temporary painting on Water Street. Basically, the minimal scope required to bring the garage down and have a local lot. In order to do that, in addition to Wendell continuing to develop the bid spec and with that package to grow as bid, we need to pass a resolution just moralizing the seeker determination, which in this case is a type two. For that effects. And the other motion that we wrote is, is really not required tonight. There's not, it's not an action. It's just sort of if the council agrees, it's saying that we would like the city staff and Wendell as our extension of our staff to proceed with the demolition and the project as presented tonight, you know, proceed in the direction that we've laid out. It's really not committing the council to anything. Obviously, the commitment would come when you're awarding a, a bid. And setting a budget for that project, which presumably would be in early September for the demolition.
So, so with that.
Is, is there more discussion to be had? Anything needs more, for your redevelopment?
Whereas the city of O'Leonton is actively pursuing the continuation of the Market Street Transportation Improvement Project. And whereas the demolition of the existing parking garage and the subsequent redevelopment of the site or integral components of the Market Street Transportation Improvement Project and whereas the existing parking garage has been ordered demolished by the city of O'Leonton Board of Public Service. In order to check the public welfare and whereas the city of O'Leonton is utilizing same funds awarded by the New York State Department of State to complete Market Street Transportation Improvement Project. And whereas the New York State Department of State requires a secret determination as part of the environmental review process, therefore be it resolved. That the city of O'Leonton hereby determines that this is a type two action as defined by New York State statute. Section sixteen seventeen point five, plus three, sub two. And we have a result that pursuant to section sixteen seventeen point five, sub two. This activity involves build, replacement, relocation, or reconstruction of a structural facility in kind on the same site. Including upgrading buildings to meet building energy required host and load. And be it further resolved that the city of O'Leonton is not required to conduct any further environmental review as a result of this type two determination. And be it further resolved that this resolution shall take that immediately.
So do I have anything to approve? Followed by party and discussion.
Because we don't have it in front of us.
No, no.
And again, I feel like our backs getting pushed against the wall. I don't understand if you had this resolution, why it couldn't have been part of this package.
That I can speak to.
So I just.
We wrote the actual verbiage of the resolution this afternoon. Our intent is to have this discussion tonight, and if the council was in agreement with the process to introduce the motion as opposed to.
So you wrote it this afternoon. It still could have been printed out and given to us. Really, seriously.
I, I mean, that's.
I'll take that. I'll take that.
But this is starting to become a habit, Mark.
Okay.
It's becoming a habit that we don't get the stuff in front of us and then we're getting it at the last minute and then we're getting asked to make decisions. Come on, be fair to the council for a change. Okay? I, Mark, seriously, this is, you, this is becoming a history now.
Okay. Outside of that.
So sort of this. So this is just to declare ourselves with type two action, going secret. Was the agency the commission?
Secret, no, normally in the secret process, as we actually require a council. The reason for memorializing it, this motion.
Sure. So as part of the Department of State's work plan.
Sorry, just for the record, could you state your name?
Sure, my name is.
Who you're actually representing.
My name is Danny Lappin. I'm here representing the New York State Department of State Office of Planning, Development and Community Infrastructure. I should also acknowledge that I'm the City of O'Leonton Planning Commission Chair. So the delineation is, I'm here on state business tonight. When you state that. So to answer that question, I also live at three college terraces. Only on New York and our office is located at one Commerce Plaza, only ten floors. So to answer the question, as part of the Department of State's work plan, secret documentation is required. Demonstrate that all proper, you know, statutes, laws and regulations were followed over the course of the project. So that's why we require that for our file to demonstrate, you know, project compliance.
And so just to backline, we do not have this.
And I guess, since I just heard it, within that, we're just approving the seeker action. We're not actually saying we're approving the demolition.
I would just agree with Scott to like agenda items can either be voted for or yes, but having, having them in advance to use their purpose that we can. We certainly can understand. So I would, I would have to have that motion, not motion publicly, but of like going forward to be great and even if you're out here, if you're going to go in that direction, just having a.
I guess I just want to throw this out one more time. So we're just, we're just voting on just the seeker action, Greg. That's what it is, meaning we're ju, we're not saying yes, that we're agreeing to demolishing, demolition of the bill.
Right, the next motion we will read would be to say that I'm not going to read it now, but essentially that we, we authorize the city staff proceeding where with that question, right? Now, that's not, we're not hiring a contractor, no, brings, I have a contract, we're not setting the budget. It's just saying that this is the direction since, since this was tonight. This is the direction that the Department of State and other funding agencies are expecting us to pursue. Based on the timeline we shared with them today, we just want to make sure that everyone's on the same page with where we're headed with the project. Of course, when we actually go to bid and have a airflow better and all of that, that's when we come back to the council for the votes. You approve the contract and that was.
So just kind of tying in. I'm looking at the piece of paper that we were given on May fifteenth from Wendell. The August twenty twenty-two Atlantic Testing Laboratory is the destructive and non-destructive concrete testing. I might have missed it. I apologize to the, to the council if I've missed it. I don't remember getting receipt of that report. So have we been given that report?
The council is not, that's a, a detail or not a second thing that we each have that we are sending to the council.
So within that report, what does it say? Does it, does it give that the, the concrete had segregated or?
I actually don't have that in front of me and so I'm not going to verbatim or quote anything, but essentially they came out to do the structural testing to verify the integrity and inform the design. So they did what we call like concrete dragging and from that you, you get like sound observations and you can understand the deterioration. They also poured several holes, which the D P W and their team sort of blocked off some areas. So we could understand what was happening underneath each level. So things like that, to that nature, and then provided in that information supporting their testing.
So what was the overall findings? I mean, what did you have as a report given back then?
So that information, I think you said it was dated August, right? Is that what it was?
Says August twenty twenty-two?
Yes. So that information actually informed the previous, the original schematic design, which included the rehabilitation to the garage. So that level of testing was done so that it would inform our structural engineers to the level rehab required. So all of the recommendations and then therefore the costs that were done under the schematic design where we were rehabilitating the garage. It, it was, gave you things like, yes, how much was once they poured it out, what was that deterioration? What did it look like? Where did, what is condition of some of the steel and what kind of reinforcement or other steel supports are required? So things like that was basically informative to then allow our engineers to take that information and say, okay, here's what we would need to do to rehab. And that's where we got into actually recognizing that we needed to actually like tear up each level and repour and all the expansion joints were shot and just that level of detail.
I guess I'll just say it out loud, that would have been extremely helpful for me, or maybe the rest of the council to have known that back then. We literally spent two months talking about spending sixteen to twenty-four thousand dollars to make repairs to a ramp. And if we had known that the concrete was to a point of degradation that, at that level, that would have been extremely helpful for our decision-making process. I mean, I'm looking at Mark and David. I mean, I'm thinking of how much we actually went back and forth between the three of us discussing this at length. I, I wanted to invest in the infrastructure. These guys were like, well, taking an opposite view of that. And, you know, and this is when it really caught my eye when I was rereading this from when we were giving this on the fifteenth. That's just great information that the decision makers, it would have been helpful for us to have known that. I mean, we could have saved you a whole lot of time and effort in knowing that we're right at the end life of this garage. Right? So if we'd known that back in August of twenty-two, we could have had these discussions a while ago.
So the August twenty, just to clarify, that report wasn't didn't provide any information that would have caused the discussion for needing to demolish it at that point. It was the more recent information that I think you received in your, in that memo based on work that and site visits and, and field work that the local structural engineer had done.
Now, that, the previous one, as Liz was saying, gave us the understanding of what the rehab would. So, you know, as, as we talked about, I think we talked about the previous board meeting where they had to come in and mill down the concrete right flat and then report because it basically delaminated itself. I think that's the right term. That, that's where that came from, things like that. So that starts.
I'm just sharing this with you, just one voice, but from reading, going back and reading your reports that you've given us, there was two or three that we had been given as a council and I've gone back and read them. I mean, you literally gave, and when I say you, I mean Wendell, gave a, a fair to good or, or good report. And then, you know, there's this concrete testing that happened in August twenty-two that we, we didn't know about. And again, I'm just saying from our perspective, it would have been very helpful if that had been shared with all of us. It would have helped us talk to our constituents a lot earlier on that, hey, there's a lot going on with the garage. Because that's the general consensus. I was actually surprised that there wasn't more, you know, questioning of how did we get to the one point? I think Sophie was the only one that pointed that how of, how did we get here so quickly? I know I personally have heard that a lot.
Because I, I think it's worth echoing those questions for Sophie, just in a way that I, you know, it gives us more information and understanding about the past observation of the, of the structure. So what what does, or what has an inspection of the garage looked like historically? Because I've been getting that question all the time. So it would be helpful for me to understand, like, do we have, have we ever had routines in, you know, professional inspections of the garage or, and or, you know, I think what ended up shutting it down was just a, you know, like a visual inspection by D P W thing. Are those helping your team? Like, understanding. Yeah, to have some background to be able to provide, because I think that is a question. That's how people learn.
Yeah, so I mean, it's a fifty something year old structures, they think they're deteriorating over time. We did a, well, asked it a major rehab, I think in two thousand and eleven, the engineering time with the engine on that project. Included structural. Steel painting, some structural steel replacements, some structural repairs to some of the stair towers. We had not been doing annual inspections from two thousand and twelve up until when we we hired Wendell to do this project, obviously they. Nineteen, I guess, and. Started doing their investigations through the conceptual report and. You know, you kind of know the timeline from there. The the visual inspections, I mean DPW going through the garage every day cleaning. When they noticed that the crack, they had to settle and it was a sort of a sudden change.
Yeah, no, I think you're onto something that like, you know, if the garage was looked at. As a then forty five year old structure in two thousand and eighteen. To even present rehabilitation as a. Prospect, I think that it would have been hindsight, so it's worth noting, but that it would have been helpful to understand. Fully the state that that the garage was in before we got to this point. But again, that's not where we are now.
Further discussion.
So great, first of all, my apologies if you think that was directed towards you, it wasn't. My frustrations with Mark, okay? Just so you know, I want to apologize for that.
Because I don't think that had anything to do with the mayor.
So. Just, I want to just go back to the whole, this whole seat, the resolution, because I guess I'm just not understanding, because I don't have it in front of me to read it. Can you read it to me again? Please?
Whereas. Whereas the city of Oneonta is actively pursuing the continuation of the market street transportation improvement project and. Whereas demolition of the municipal parking garage and such development is higher. And whereas the affecting part of the garage of the northern demolish, the city of Oneonta supportive of its service in order to protect the public welfare. And whereas the city of Oneonta is utilizing some funds awarded by New York State Partner of State to meet the market transportation improvement project. And whereas the New York State Partner of State requires a secret determination as part of the environmental review process. Therefore, we are resolved. That the city of Oneonta here by determines that this type two action was defined by New York State statute. Section six seventeen point five, seven, seven two. And we have further result that pursuant to section six seventeen point five, seven, seven two. This activity involves both replacement rehabilitation or reconstruction of the structure or facility in kind on the same site. Including upgrading buildings only building energy with higher codes and code. And be a further result that the city of Oneonta is not required to conduct any further environments review as a result of this type of determination. And be a further result that this resolution shall be.
So it's either. Rebuild. Rehabilitate, tear down. And replace is what we're.
Well, this is talking about what happens after the teardown. This speaker is just about the teardown.
I have a related question to go ahead. And that it's type two because we will. Repair, rebuild or replace in kind.
It's not so much because we will repair, it includes the demolition. No, that's just a generic. The language in seeker law. That is applicable.
Intent of the project under seeker is that the site will be used for parking as it's currently being used for parking. There might be an accessory structure like the transportation hub, which is. Essentially replacing the existing trailway structure, so. The intent of seekers to show that there's really going to be no. New environmental impacts because the existing use of the land, the existing pavement, the existing. That's all kind of staying the same. We're not proposing to build like. You know, a seventeen story skyscraper type building with, I don't know, like a, like a trampoline park next to it, like. It's partly for parking, used for use, like. There might be a two story garage put there, there might be, you know, like however that project kind of pans out. Intensity of the use, the impact on the environment is essentially going to be the same.
So, okay, I guess there is. So what if? We change gears and said, yeah, we're going to test it out, then all seventy seven years in the building, we want to see something else that.
So, so what was the, what would this something else be?
I don't know, so they wanted to put up a.
Yeah, so basically what happens, we would sell, we would sell them the the land. If that's something we wanted to do, then they would come up with their own project and that would be entirely new seeker.
So this wouldn't hinder.
No, oh, no, 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 this is just basically saying that we have a project right now that will ideally. Replace in some way the existing structure that's there. For the same purpose. If that scope were radically changed or we were to sell that parcel when a new project came up. That would require a new review. That would be a different project. It would not be the current. Scope that we're looking at with Wendell or one that we've looked at in the past. It is interesting, we do not leave our proposed project with any impact on the environment that's not already occurring in that site under the current conditions. And therefore, we don't need to do elaborate environmental review because. Effectively, that review is already been done. Watch right now. Nothing will change. Or the change would be so minor, it won't, it won't have a negative impact.
If I was to explain that way first, I wouldn't got, sorry.
Is there any further discussion on this? No, I'm sorry, so if you would call the role, please. And then.
So you want to give us a little bit of setup on the motion then?
Yeah, I can, I can kind of reiterate this before the. This motion is not to take any action. Normally, when we do a project, the motions are establish a budget. Enter a contract with so and so to do work. This motion is just to memorialize that we're on the same page with where this project is built, demolitions the next step, we're going to pursue that. Understanding that we're going to have to go to bid. Issue a contract, motion, a motion to award a contract and to set up the budget.
Should we, should we wait?
He's probably going to want to hear Greg's explanation too.
But what I was saying, as long as I, everybody, for a minute to what I was saying in our, my opening remarks is, is, is.
We're going to have a sequence of questions because as we start to let you do this thing, we're going to want to provide a sober work. You know, at as early in opportunity as we must with and with us going to serve and take discussion, we need to take deep in kind of in the progressive. So it's going to be, they're going to be. Very interesting consequences. Okay, you're back and we're going to read the motion.
Motion that the common council authorizing the demolition of the Minus, the parking garage and direct city staff to proceed with finalizing the design and bid documents. With bid letting to occur as soon as practical.
Right, and so do I have a motion to approve? And do I have further discussion on this?
What are we bidding on? We, have we made a decision? We're doing a garage? Are we doing it a lot?
Bidding demolition of municipal parking garage, that's all. And as I, we talked about before, there's some ancillary work associated with demolition. It must be done to have a secure site such as that retaining wall. But it's not, we're not deciding on parking lots or. Deck above that or transit or any of the streetscape work.
This would include, because we're doing the demo, we would get the retaining wall.
Yeah, it's on the retaining wall with the the ramp going up from Water Street to the upper level now, and that goes away. Where that was becomes your second line on Water Street, so it's a temporary there to basically make you two ways, two ways to. With the turnaround at the end. I mean, it wouldn't be the full Water Street scope that's a completed project like the shows or anything close to that. It would be a temporary condition for all of that project, whatever that.
So Greg, same, yes to this means that we're committing at least five hundred and seventy eight thousand city funding. I'm understanding that correctly.
That means we're committing to moving forward with that a little bit garage, but we don't know the cost until we bid. Based on the estimate, we're showing using up the DOS funding and using some additional city funds.
And the additional funds could be.
Up to below above.
Does this also include some of the NICEA, you showed the relocation work?
This is not, we need to do some more communication with NICEA to figure out what that number is that they need from us and have an agreement draft and so that we go. Pass another motion in a future council meeting to authorize them to proceed with their work to do temporary relocation and then.
My question is, does the work go with the work? Like in words, does the nice work need to happen no matter what the cost? So we're to kind of cheat a point, like what are we operating with right now?
It's the demolition of the garage and the related work in terms of the retained home paving and the nice. Whether it's the temporary relocation, but temporary.
If we were to go forward with the wording, it actually costs garage, the NICEA power and speed relocated first.
Right.
So this motion does not speak to the NICEA issue.
Right.
There will be another one before we go on.
That's exactly my point. I just want to know with this, you're sending motion? Yeah, thank you. Is that all? Is that enough?
There is, when you're doing this, so there's a hydrant underneath the garage, it's got to get relocated. I mean, things, there's ancillary work like that, but there are parts of that that have to occur.
But it's not separated out in the process, it's right.
It's all part of it, it's all part, yeah.
So this is just to go ahead and get like a. Some sent out bids. And then we can reject the bids if we don't like them like we normally do. It's not committing to, yes, we're going to tear this thing down tonight.
Yeah, the five seventy is that coming from the general funds? Or is that? Yeah, where's that? I mean, I know that's not a definite number.
We're excited at the time how that budget's set up, like ultimately that. Could be covered by that ten million dollar bond authorization. Obviously, when we authorize bonds, we're not issuing the bonds at that time, it's that's done a little bit later on. I don't know if Ginny wants to to speak to that at all, but you know. Something like five hundred seventy eight thousand dollars, the city can pay for that and then cover that with the bond issues later on. If that's what we decide to do, it may, it may be something we decide to take that from our reserves. That's a decision to be made at that time, but. Let me do the spreadsheet that I went through earlier that shows that as being part of that overall ten million. One hundred twenty one thousand nine hundred sixty eight dollar city contribution.
You're referring to, Greg, you're referring to this column all the way down through.
Yeah.
Under city.
Hey Claire. So this is all video, correct? This is all our.
Column that's labeled city. Not, not the entire demolition. And to spend DOS funding, which we have about two and a half million.
And the, the NICEA were about two million dollars.
Yeah, so Daniel Lepin, Department of State. I, you know, wanted to clarify, part of the intent of this motion was to demonstrate to funding agencies that the city intends to. Adhere to the timeline established in the contract agreement with the Department of State, so. To give an update on that, the Department of State approved or tentatively has sent, has sent an unexecuted contract to the city. Which authorizes a one-year extension for the project, basically through the demolition timetable illustrated by Wendell. So this would, you know, show, demonstrate in writing to this, you know, Department of State that another any parstate development to that. The city intends to follow its timetable for the project, how it does so, at least for the expenditure of DOS funds, you know. Because you'll know that the one-year extension doesn't cover the construction. So it's just to show us that, you know, the city intends to kind of keep up to its end of the bargain.
Further discussion, anyone? Okay, if there is no further discussion, we'll call the roll. Yes.
Only because it's got to be one to say, I'll say no.
Which brings us to the end of, was going to be a continuing discussion, but the end of that discussion, see things, thank you very much for that. Do we have any correspondence like we did?
You have two items of correspondence, basically you're happy to email to you. Understanding what bond resolution.
I would like it red.
From the Ford on Main, partnered with the Spring Brook. Members of the city of Oneonta, common council, the mayor, regarding the parking garage and the road trial drilling. Four block LLC is bringing up a partner with the city of Oneonta in the development of the Ford on Main. Coming in the fall of twenty twenty three, the Ford on Main will introduce twenty four new upper floor housing units. The city, the law will be renovation of the infrastructure to support the five existing businesses that currently on building. With a total investment of nine million, our hope is that Ford on Main contributes to a renewed sense of occupancy and downtime. It also providing a template for existing undeveloped buildings on Main Street. A significant part of our vision for the Ford on Main is the building's access and connection to the surrounding streets and the prison parking. Four block LLC partners with the city for access to the public walkway, some called the R H. That currently calls main streets and existing parking garage. From a legal standpoint, the building that pedestrians are able to walk through, from Main Street to access the bridgeway and parking garage is owned by a four block LLC. Which then grants the city an easement abuse for pedestrian pass through. Because of the easement arrangement for the pass through, the needs of future four block tenants for parking. The vision and plans for the parking garage are undeniably connected and with extreme importance to the Ford on Main and Spring Brook. In recognition of that convention, we feel that it is important to community or addition to city council members to manage and to. To summarize the position of Ford Block Spring Brook. Supports demolition of the existing parking garage. Supports demolition of the former twelve charts building on the corner of Chestnut Street Extension and Market Street. Supports establishment in accurate parking lot in the current book of both the current parking garage and twelve charts building. Allowing for reestablishment of public parking in the short term. Supports reevaluation of the proposed transit hub regarding usage, location, scope, cost, and means to connect to any parking facility. Supports not investing in an elevator for what would remain as the parking garage. Connecting the creation of a new parking structure garage transit hub with a developer who will build thousands of houses in class and will cost a good beginning. The ladies are moving forward urgently with the demolition of both existing parking garage and twelve charts building. Allows both structures to continue to be signs of instability for downtown Oneonta. We encourage the city to explore a declaration of emergency demolition for the reasons of public safety. We are aware of this happening in many other cities in the capital region, for example. The creation of new car rental parking on Market Street is significant in the benefit of parking issues. Establishing accurate parking and the book to both revenues to a certain level lower cost return rate that is happening in the short term, while preserving the long term options. We are aware of this force of action. We are aware of this force of action, taking place in Middleton and many other upstate cities. Religacy parking garages were positively seen issues. Those that need an elevator from what remains is the parking garage should be accommodated by use of the ramp and the parking surface in conjunction with the shared elevators. That will be installed in the Ford on Main in the summer of twenty twenty three. This elevator will allow pedestrians access between the Water Street and Main Street roads. Four block and spring with main committee partners that are willing to participate in ongoing discussions and actually willing to listen to O'Neanta. We appreciate the expertise of the city, there's only common council members who find the best, most positive solutions for these immediate issues. And from the area for six June fourteen twenty twenty three. Dear Mayor Jenny and also members of marketing, any use of the car in the person Harrington, Rafter and Falco. I hope you do not mind me sharing secret street and my thoughts on the challenge and opportunity presented by the current commission of our mainest parking garage. Having spent many years intensively involved with the project, I hope that my perspective might be found helpful. I also recognize that I may not have knowledge of the current situation when that would maybe matters for getting out of there to meet some of those thoughts. Costs. A significant portion of the project that we finance through bonds. A ten million dollar twenty year bonds at approximately three percent interest, very low by today's standards. Could require an annual payment of nearly seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The course of twenty nine dollar bond is reached by seven thousand. Please take the time to explore and understand what essential stuff and services would need to be eliminated for us to meet these payments. Especially considering that the twenty twenty three budget already required one in one year use for saving the resources to cover operating expenses. Impacts to quality of life and safety should be well understood in the moment of the war. History. We initially contracted with Wendell in two thousand and seventeen question mark to develop a feasible conceptual plan for both the parking garage and transit hub. For the end of twenty twenty one, four years and hundreds of thousands of dollars later. We received their final report along with financial analysis. And attaching the link to the full sixty seven page report in the email. Most importantly, it stated the following. Estimated cost for carrying the parking garage, four point five four one. When developing a cost estimate at this point in the overall process, we must make assumptions based on information at hand, our experience and professional judgment. Therefore, we recommend carrying at least twenty five percent design of market conditions frequently. In addition to the typical general condition in the contractor overhead and profit due to the early conceptual nature of the design and planning process. Also included is a four page floor by floor analysis of the structural condition of the parking garage. All components are rated as either good or fair to good. Most importantly, while these are high level estimates, there is no advisory or concern noted. That the city should conduct a more detailed inspection prior to moving forward with the project. In a separate undated report attached in the email, designed to provide the city with a plan to pay for the costs. The garage renovation was estimated at five million seven hundred and fifty five thousand dollars. Again, there is no advisory or concern noted that the city should conduct a more detailed inspection prior to moving forward with the project. In February of twenty three, Wendell returned to compare the options of demolition for free of location. And again, there was no advisory or concern noted that the city should conduct a more detailed inspection prior to making a decision on how to move forward with the project. My thoughts. Given the inconsistencies within my experience, some lack of responsiveness. I strongly recommend a second opinion when we intend to reject the document. And while I have no reason to believe that Wendell's potential to earn considerable amount of money associated with the design and instruction oversight, we care of their analysis. If you think we have an obligation to do our due diligence. I affirm the argument that we can't wait because if we do, we will lose the two million dollar D R F funds outside for the garage relocation. The cost to the city of not getting this project right would be much greater than two million dollars. By returning the two million dollars if required, we can carefully investigate the website of the garage meeting. And be certain that the option of rehabilitation does not exist. This project will impact the people of O'Neanta's quality of life and safety in many ways and for many decades to come. They will not remember us for delaying the project by a few months. They will never forget us for getting it wrong. A link to the full sixty seven page final report and an attack containing the cost and feeling analysis mentioned by the. Thank you for taking the time to read this. We will be all aware of the name here.
I have no need um for executive setting. And so with that, I'll say thank you. Yeah.
Yeah, let me just pick a a comment. Um, I I to to, um, just, I wanted to express my gratitude publicly to all of our city staff here that have put so many. I I don't even know the number of hours, but so many hours minutes together. I sincerely appreciate it. Um, and I think the city is, it's better off because of, because of all of it. Um, secondly, I just wanted to um express my appreciation for um. John Raptors' use of service. I know you did as well. Um, John was a was a big help for me um running for council and. Um, just turned from six and was uh not just. Um, he was a great help and guided me through the process, so he has me. Uh, thank him personally for for his service.
Does anybody else have anything we're going to do?